Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon, City Council Meeting for March 22nd, 2023. Yeah, that's right, to order. The time is now 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C is our roll call of our council members. I'll ask the clerk to call. Go, please.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith?
Here.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Holst?
Here.
Councilmember Rollinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Thank you. Under Community Comments, it's a review of emails from the public. And I'll ask Peter if there's been any emails sent in.
No emails.
All right. Thank you. Item two is our Public Comments. If anyone is here for Public Comment, you're welcome to come to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence and comments about three minutes or so.
My name is Brian Hill. I live at 1618 North 26th Street. I am, by definition, normally a pain in the butt where it comes to city council members, but thanks to your mayor, I've been content to watch from afar. Well, that stops tonight. I come to see how just how many people hate wildlife. Apparently, word has gotten around, and it's been in the newspaper, that you plan to build a built an apartment complex behind Summer Glen Apartments on wetland in an area where wildlife travel through. There have been deer traveling through. There's a hawk that lives in the trees, squirrels all around, birds all around. Not to mention the fact that there's a fish run that runs right through the center of the field. I don't know who came up with this cockamamie idea, but they sure as heck didn't talk to any of the people around there. I did. Nobody, but nobody wants this apartment to go in. I grew up in Southern California, and I got to tell you, you people up here don't know how good you have it. You got to go to a big city, and I'm talking of city in an area bigger than Seattle, to realize just how good you have it. You drive two minutes, and you're out in the country here. I can see the hills from my kitchen. If you want to put an apartment in there, you better be prepared for graffiti. You better be prepared for animals trespassing through it. You better be prepared for challenges because it is wetlands back there. And from what I have been told by previous city councils, the wetlands triumph triumph over anything. That field, as it is now, is not being upkept. Last year, there was a fire out there. And you want to put an apartment complex out there? That's the stupidest idea I've heard in a long time. Whoever decided on that idea should have to live out there, and they should have be forced to talk to everyone out there. Because right now, this city council's flying blind into what the people want. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Anyone else for comment? Seeing none, we'll move along. Under our Consent Agenda, we have items A, B, C, and D. It's the approval of council meeting minutes, payroll checks, direct deposits, wire transfers, claims, and agreements, 4381 through 4386.
I'd move the adoption of the Consent Agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under Reports tonight, we have our Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Report, and that is Councilmember Mary Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. We met this evening at 6:00 here in these chambers after approving our meeting minutes from last, from February 22nd. The first thing we went into was a, I'm sorry, Director Valeski talking to us about the Finance Department. He gave us a proprietary funds update, told us about the fund reserves and all of our utility funds and their associated capital funds and the Equipment Rental and Reserve Fund. All funds are currently at what was expected during the budgeting process, and overall the balances are in good shape for future planned capital investment needs. Then we talked about the city debt update. Under state law, voters may approve general obligation debt issues up to 7.5% of assessed valuation, split 2.5% each to general purpose, parks, open space, and utilities. But currently, we have no debt with parks and open space and are using only 8.4% of the allowable debt for the utilities, which is about 11.5 million. With general purpose debt, the city is using 8.6% of allowable debt with the fire station remodel bonds of 11.7 million. When the city receives the federal TFI loan for the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project, then the city will be using approximately 27.7% of the allowable debt amount of 136.4 million. Overall, the city is in very good shape with the amount of debt it will be carrying. We also got a little sneak peek on sales tax revenues through February, actually through March. They're up 279,723 from last year at this time. The city has collected over 2.4 million in the first three months, which is over 20%, 6% of the overall budgeted amount of 9.2 million. Then we had a Parks and Enrichment Services update from Director Burner. The first thing we talked about was the PUD field update. We're moving forward with the option of upgrading Hillcrest Park and Edgewater Park to accommodate the fields that will be lost at PUD. Hillcrest will have a new soccer field, and Edgewater Park will have a new soccer field and an overlay baseball field, or vice versa, whichever way you want to look at it. The city is asking PUD to pay the city $200,000 and install the new two-inch waterline and meter at Hillcrest Park. The city will then do the work through staff and contractors to revise the fields at Hillcrest Park and Edgewater Park. Also, the new field rental policy has provided field use for five new youth organizations, which is pretty exciting. People that haven't used it in the past are coming now and asking to see if they can get on the schedule, so that's really exciting. I hope you've all received your new spring/summer activity guide. They were mailed to households over the last few weeks. And one of our new events this year is Earth Day, and the event will be held at Hillcrest Park on Saturday, April 22nd. And also, we got a little bit of a peek at some of the new banners that we, our Arts Commission asked for people to give us submissions for new banners along the river, along the river part. And 81 submissions were received, 46 submissions were chosen, and the banners will be installed along the Riverwalk and should be up around mid-April. They're quite lovely. The ones we saw were just so pretty and so diverse that we're, I'm really excited to see how everything else comes out. We had a small update from the mayor, just general information about a trip to Washington, DC, a little bit library, so pretty much just an overall update. And we actually adjourned our meeting at 6:30.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Committee Report for Development Services Committee and Councilmember Melissa Beaton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So we met in here last Wednesday evening, March 15th, and first up on our agenda were, was a continued discussion on our Design Standards Review. What we're looking at doing is modifying what the Design Review Board looks like in downtown Mount Vernon. We are studying doing nothing, keeping it as is, losing it, or option four is to move and modify it. Option four would look like it is now part of the pre-application process, there's community involvement and input. So it would look something like this. Step one, the property owner reaches out to the city, and the city outlines the entire process, which includes design review. The owner, the owner is given the application forms, and the meeting is required as part of the process. Step two is pre-application. The meeting is held prior to submitting the application. The owner or the agent schedules the meeting and invites the Mount Vernon Downtown Association or members of the downtown to the meeting. The owner takes minutes at these meetings, and the attendees are asked for guided feedbacks. So then those minutes and feedback are submitted to the city. Three questions are being proposed. The first one would be, were the project design elements presented? Were you able to provide input regarding the design elements? And what suggestions or advice do you have for the applicant regarding those design elements? Step three comes the application process. Materials are submitted to the city. This includes the application forms, the drawings, the project description, the meeting minutes, and the guided feedback responses, if any. Step four is the notice of application. The application is deemed to complete. The city creates a notice of application. That is then sent to the stakeholders, which would include the applicant, the downtown members, whomever gave guided feedback. That includes by law a 14-day comment period. Feedback is then given to staff. Step five is the permit review process. Staff reviews and checks the project for compliance with the codes in our Design Standards Handbook. Public comment helps inform the review process. After the decision, based on Mount Vernon code, there is a 10-day reconsideration. And then there is also, after that, 14-day appeal period to the hearing examiners. So that was that discussion, and then we moved on to our 2023 docket items, where there are currently 17 to 18 projects that the city is looking to tackle over the next year. Some of those include finalizing our shoreline master plan, a land clearing ordinance, a sign code, so that's what's going to be going on for 2023. And we're told that we might actually get all of those done, so that's exciting news. Then we had some department updates. Our building official is retiring at the end of April, so there is a job posting on the city's website. We've had many permitting and process improvements, couple ideas, some of them are, we're streamlining the process. You could now apply online 24/7, business licenses and things like that. Some of the staff members in Development Services use a GPS receiver, I believe, when they're out in the field, and that receiver, the operating system, and the desk software is at end of life, so we're looking at replacing that. Then we were given some legislative and project updates. One of the legislate, well, there's several legislative, several bills that we're looking at. Some of the things we're already doing, accessory dwelling units and things like that. Then we were given a project update. There is the Glenmore Platte, which consists of 26 acres, 36 lots, 31 of those are single-family lots and four duplex lots, one multifamily lot with 36 units. There is a critical area permit in the works, and that project is moving forward. Martha's Place is, we received an update on that. That's in its final stages here in the next month or two. There is a life safety issue with some underground, with underground fire permits, so that's between the developer and the contractor, so they're working on that. Cities have seen uptick in solar panel permits. Unfortunately, what's happening is that there are numerous installations in the past year where the contractor is not getting the permits that they are required to get. So we're working with the fire department and the contractor. Homeowners are caught in the middle, and Ellen I is aware of this, and so stay tuned on that. We're going to see Zipley Fiber out and about because they're exercising their right-of-way permits, and so it's just that time of year. And then we received an update on the Mount Vernon Christian School and their master plan, and I think we ended the meeting around 7:15.
All right. Thank you very much. Under Reports, item B is our council member comments. Any council member comments this evening? Okay. We'll move along. Under Mayor's Report, just a couple of things. Our legislature is in session, and they are scheduled to be done, I believe it's April 24th, if I'm going to remember the right day. But right now, they are working on not only passage of bills in both houses, but also the budget. And so we, as the city, have asked for one more allocation from the state capital budget for the Mount Vernon Library Commons, and that's $2 million, just to get us to that finish line. So what we're asking is, is if our community is willing to help us out, contact either the 10th or the 40th Legislative District. That's wherever you live in the city. You could go on the legislature website, which is leg.wa.gov, and you can even put in your address and find your legislators. But we'd really love to send letters of support, saying we'd really love this help from the state. Please work on that $2 million for us, and any good thoughts and requests to our legislators would be very helpful. You could also, if that's the easiest way, just ledge.wa.gov. You can also type in their emails, which actually is probably a little more complicated to explain in this report, but you could do, say, ron.muzzal.ledge.wa.gov. But go directly to the website, they'll connect you. It's easier. All right. And then just a construction update about the Commons Project. If you haven't been downtown recently, you'll start seeing the poured concrete columns coming up out of the ground, which is exciting. Lighting continues to work on those footings around the perimeter of the site and the vertical columns, so you'll see several of those around the entire site. The intersection at Third and Kincaid has finally been opened back up to allow for both lanes of traffic to turn left or east from Third onto Kincaid Street and make the U-turn again. And so thank you for the patience on that. There was a lot of utility work that required that closure, so that's open again in time for tulip traffic. And then just as soon as those concrete footings and columns are poured, then the, just the nudge out into some of those travel lanes on Second and Third will get, start, start being pulled back as well, so won't be as disruptive downtown as far as traffic goes. The project has received several visitors in the last few weeks. We've had three visits from Puget Sound Energy, from their senior leadership, to come take a look at the project and how they could collaborate with us. And we welcomed Representative Rick Larson, did a video about the project for his social media, so we're thrilled that they came to visit and helped support the project. As always, you can find more information on the city website, mountverninwaa.gov, including a live webcam where you can watch all the activity happening live. All right. Item D tonight is a committee agenda request. Is there any committee agenda requests from council members? All right. Seeing none, we have no unfinished business. And under New Business tonight, our first up is our Skagit Valley Tulip Festival poster presentation, something we look forward to every single year, and so I'll have Peter Donovan make the introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Council. Yeah, every year, we look forward to a visit from Skagit Valley Tulip Festival Executive Director Cindy Verge. Welcome, Cindy, here tonight to present the 2023 poster design. Also, maybe you would want to ask her her favorite question, which is, what is the exact date and time that the flowers will bloom? Welcome, Cindy.
And there we have it on the screen. And here it is.
It's so gorgeous.
Ready to hang up somewhere in the city.
Love it.
I think everyone will really like it. Tulip Festival is going to be great this year. It is so wonderful to have things much more back to normal. The Canadian border's open. We have been able to have our Tulip Ambassador Event. In fact, yesterday, we spent the day down in Olympia, meeting the governor, doing a tour of the Secretary of State's office, meeting our legislators from the area with our child ambassadors. They've already decided how that even though they're two different ages, that they could both be 14 at the same time and apply to be pages. So I thought that was delightful. We're getting that service bug in them, and that would be good. We have the PACAR Open House back that hasn't been up here since 2019, and so we're looking forward to those several thousand people that will go through PACAR. And we've done some really interesting partnerships with the Skagit Tourism Bureau this year. They have partnered with us to do a passport program. It's a digital passport program, and you earn points. So you earn points for going to the tulip farms, you earn points for going to the restaurant, to a restaurant, you earn points to going to the parade, to the street fair. And you can use those points to come to my office and get a special sticker. It's a holographic sticker, it's pretty cool looking. Or you can enter to win a restaurant gift certificate drawing. Or you can enter to win the grand prize drawing of a night in La Conner, at the La Conner Country End, and a restaurant there for dinner. And so we're really excited with that. In the pre-signups, we already had nearly 600 people sign up in just about a month, and that was really gratifying. That'll give us data, we're hopeful that it gives us lots of data to say, where are our tourists going? Where are our visitors going? Where are they coming from? And it'll also give them the chance to go out and explore everything a little bit, because there's over 70 different entries on that passport program. So that will be a really good test to see how well they move around the county and what they find. And we're just excited to be able to partner with the Tourism Bureau. We'll have three more passport programs that they're going to implement on the visit skagitvalley.com website. So to me, it's a really good partnership, a really strong entry for them for that. Then we've also, and the city also helped us with this, got some extra funding through them and our lodging tax applications around the county, and we hired a media company called Swell Media, and they've been helping us expand our social media posts, our presence online, working to try and make sure that we're out there and saying to people, hey, come on back. We've missed you with the past, since 2020, because we've noticed kind of fits and starts of whether people are remembering to come back to the Skagit Valley. So we're very excited about that. And we've added a fourth grower. We now have four different places for people to go and pay admission, go in and see tulips planted, just for them to walk around and see. And that's really exciting because we had been down to two for a really long time, and then we went to three, and now we're at four. And so it's going to be a lot of fun to see what Tulip Valley Farms has to offer. They describe what they've planted, and folks will say, well, me? Well, what is it going to look like? I don't know. We'll all find out together, because literally, the bulbs were planted last fall. And so that's going to be just a brand-new venture. And then, of course, Tulip Town has a lovely planting spot, and they've revamped some of their things out there, so that'll be fun to see. And Rusengarda, you might notice that the tulip fields look different this year. They've implemented a new planting method, and for them, and it is rows about this wide, and tons of bulbs in those rows. And the advantage is, is they can plant more bulbs in less acreage. It enhances the environment because it's a net system. It's a little bit different than what Tulip Town uses, but it's a net system, so when it's pulled up out of the ground, it shakes the dirt off, and they don't have to transport dirt. It saves on labor costs of just, there's fewer fields to dig, fewer, all of the man-hours. And it's exciting. Probably the best spot to see, please just drive by, no stopping, is right across from Mexico Cafe on the west side. There's a beautiful field going to be in there, and all the tulips are up, and you can really see how those rows are laid out. And to me, it's fascinating to kind of see, oh, well, it's changed again. So now all the pictures we had of all those delightful rows, we're going to have to get new pictures of big rows. So that's exciting. So we're all set to get the Tulip Festival started. And in answer to the question, there will be tulips blooming, April 1 through 30. There'll likely be red tulips and purple tulips and yellow tulips and white tulips, and all sorts of other tulip colors blooming during that time period. And we're suggesting that folks plan on coming right in the middle of the month, because where we're at right now, that looks about right. And as we always hedge our bets, so stay tuned for weather, because we have had snow on street fair weekend in Baltimore.
Yes.
We'll hope that doesn't happen, but weather always can get us. And now to the poster. It's, the poster artist is Carrie Flavendettcher, and Carrie has created a lovely poster. It has Savannah Sparrow perching on tulips, and they really do that. Carrie is a very interesting artist in that her background is, she was a college athlete on the Yale University volleyball team, and she graduated from there with a degree in physics. Then did a stint at NASA as an intern for them, and went on to Microsoft and worked for them for a while, and then decided to become a full-time artist. And she does photorealistic work, and go on our Facebook page, we're revealing her 10 hidden images in that poster. And so we're inviting people to go there, because some of them are so, there's some sports team logos in there, there's her father's name in there, there's all sorts of different little items. So I'll have to go and see if you can find them. And with that, it'd be my pleasure to present. Ah, I see my photographer's on. We'd like to get a picture with the camera on.
I see the position. Iris up front. Come on.
I'm not blocking you, Ellen. Let me see where I'm at.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Cover my face, you're great. Breathe.
I wasn't going that way.
I'll give you a booster seat to step on, so you can cover me.
No.
You don't want to see this camera.
No, I just fall.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Item B tonight is the Skagit Valley Clean Energy Cooperative Presentation. And this, a little bit about these folks, if Peter wants to help them come on up to the podium, that would be great. We have Terry Nelson and Greg Whiting, if that's what I've got correctly, and potentially someone on Zoom, maybe Ben from Olympia. And I learned about the, this cooperative group through a presentation to the Skagit Council of Governments, and I thought it was very interesting. Skagit Valley Clean Energy Cooperative is a nonprofit organization working to steward an equitable and accessible transition to clean energy. They're partnering with Olympia Community Solar to support homeowners and small business here in Skagit County, and so I invited them to share a little bit about what the work they're doing with our community. So welcome to you, Terry and Greg.
Thank you for the introduction. You kind of said everything I was just going to say, but.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, I appreciate that very much. Solarize Program is a program I'm very impressed with, that Olympia Community Solar's been doing for a couple of years. And Greg Whiting, our associate here, is a very, is an actual bona fide expert in the energy field and has been making the presentations for us, so I'll let him go over the details. We also have brochures and cards here, which has most of the information you need to know about the program, but I'll let Greg take it from here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And so, Skagit Valley Clean Energy Co-op, as Mayor Boudreaux just said, is a nonprofit that's been founded to accelerate the use of clean energy technologies in Skagit County. The first major program that we've got is the Solarize Program. It's a nonprofit co-op that people can join as members. The purpose is more or less the same as it is with other co-ops, like the Food Co-op. You join as a member, and then you get access to things that you wouldn't necessarily get access to at prices that you wouldn't necessarily be able to get. So the Solarize Program is one that Olympia Community Solar, which is another nonprofit, has been running down in the South Sound area for the last couple of years, with the success in accelerating the installation of solar panels on people's homes down there, with hundreds of successful installations so far. And what we're doing in Skagit County this year is partnering with them to bring solar panels to Skagit County residents at a lower price than they would otherwise be able to get, without going to all of the trouble that you would usually have to go to, to find a contractor and do the research to understand what happens with solar panels on your house. So we've, we have pre-qualified three very, very well-qualified veteran contractors who have experience in installing solar panels in Skagit County, and pre-negotiated with them, essentially saying, we're going to bring you a group of hot leads, you give us a better price than you would normally give to people, and so we've negotiated about a 10% to 20% price decrease with them relative to what you would normally pay. And how it works is... And how it works is potential, potentially interested people, go to the Olympia Community Solar website that has been set up specifically for this purpose, and sign up. And then, one of the three contractors will call you to set up an appointment. No obligation to come look at your house and tell you what it would take to install solar panels on your house and to how much it would cost. Go through all the details of how to interface with the utility and take advantage of the net metering program that's available, which I'll get into in a moment. And it's essentially a turnkey opportunity to have a qualified contractor come out, look at your house, offer you solar panels at 20% below the cost that you would normally get. And then, also take advantage of a couple of programs that are available right now. Under the Inflation Reduction Act, there is a 30% federal tax credit on the solar panel installation. So, you get more money back in the first year than you're going to spend. There is also, assuming that you use the financing program, which is also a part of the program. So, you get the qualified contractor to take a look at it. If you decide to proceed, then you will install solar panels. You will participate in the net metering program. The net metering essentially pays you back over the course of a year for the energy that you generate. So, you generate energy. Puget calculates how much energy you generate. In the summer, you generate more energy. In the winter, obviously, when it's darker, you generate less energy. And during the periods of time when you're generating more than your home actually uses, you accumulate credits that are then applied against your bill during the darker period of the year when you're not generating as much as your home would actually use. And they have a true-up at the end of, at the end of spring every year. And then, so, the cost is lower. You get the federal tax credit. You have the financing option. And then, on top of that, Washington State right now has no sales tax on solar panel installations. So, financially, you have the advantage of lower cost, lower cost through the federal tax credit, lower cost through the Washington State incentive. And then, essentially, you can get your bill as low as the Puget connection fee if you install enough solar on your house to actually generate as much as you use over the course of the year. Again, no obligation at all. So, this is a opportunity, the co-op is put together to make available to Scagit County residents an opportunity to just have somebody come out and push the easy button on getting a solar installation on your house. And that's a quick summary of the program. And what we would appreciate very much is for City Council to essentially allow us to communicate with Mount Vernon residents about this program and tell them, hey, this program exists. City Council has seen it and thinks that if you're interested, it would be something that you should take a look at. And Terry, anything further?
Yeah, in an effort to further that, we'd appreciate it if we'd be able to insert a flyer in your utility bills, things like that, to get the word out. Maybe post things on your website, get the word out to your folks. It's really a great opportunity. And the contractors are very reliable. So, there shouldn't be any of the issues you were mentioning previously, so. And then, I think we have Ben Salesky, I think, online if he wants to say anything.
Peter Doobie. Yeah, you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, my name is Ben. I'm a programmer at Olympia Community Solar. Yeah, just the other thing, this is something that we've been very successfully down in Thurston County. For the last three years, this is our third Solarize Program. We've partnered with cities all over Thurston County, like Olympia, Lacy, Tomwater, Shelton, Tanninos, and Tralia. And up in Scagit County, the city of La Conner, you know, recently decided to insert some utility mailers in there. And so, you know, partnering with cities is something that we've done for the past three years now. It's a really, really great way to get the word out to all these residents. And it's a really great way of fulfilling a lot of climate and clean energy goals that cities have as far as like promoting the use and adoption of clean energy without necessarily promoting a particular business. And so, yeah, it's just something that many other cities down in Thurston have done. And really appreciate your opportunity to listen.
All right, thank you, Ben.
All right. Thank you so much.
We'll ask if the council has any questions before you step away. And we'll take some of the brochures and make sure council gets all the information.
Leave on the table over there, okay?
Maybe the clerk right there could just grab them and, yeah.
Thank you very much for coming up. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for the work you've done to form a collective and a nonprofit that helps consumers. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item C tonight is a Parks Recreation Open Space or a Prose Plan Update. And our Parks and Enrichment Services Director, Jennifer, is here for this. Jennifer?
Give me a moment. It looks like it's working. All right. Well, good evening again. And here to talk to you again, bring back to you the Prose Plan and let you know where we're at and what we're doing with the Prose Plan. So, just for a little refresher, our Prose Plan is our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. And it's a six-year strategic plan that we use to... Oh, okay. Full screen. Okay, there we go. She helped me out. Thank you. So, again, our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is a six-year strategic plan that helps us with our planning as well as enhancing our park spaces, our open spaces, our trails, recreation programs, community events. All those things we take a look at when we're looking at our Prose Plan. The plan, when it's certified, is going to make us eligible for RCO grants that come through the state. So, it's important for us to get our plan certified, get it operational, and then, keep it going. So, every six years, we should be updating that plan. And in December, we were here at council, and we were able to talk with you guys about just the overall process, the demographics that we had learned at that point in time. And then, we informed you of our community survey. So, this evening, I have Tom Beckwith, with Beckwith Consulting here, to give you an update as to what we've been working on and where we're at so far. And we'll go over community survey information. And we'll have some more demographic information for you, some five-minute and 10-minute walk, walk sheds information. So, we'll kind of walk you through. It's a lot of information, but we'll walk you through it at any time. Please stop us, ask any questions that you might have. So, you can just, I think you can arrow down.
Oh, cool. This one works.
This one works.
The things in the boxes are the things that we've completed so far. We've done the outreach surveys. We're going to show you what that is. We've done demographics. We're going to look at the demands. And we're going to look at some draft kind of citywide plan elements that we're working on right now. We showed you this population projections. The Washington State Office of Financial Management does the population projections about every six years. This data is from 2018 projections. We understand that they're robotic. To publish some updated projections this year, they will show the growth a little bit less than what they anticipated before because of COVID impacts. Wasn't as much job creation, there wasn't as much mobility in the labor market. That may or may not, as the counties allocate the growth within the county, they're going to probably take a look at what the cities can achieve. And so, they may not be proportional to each city. You may retain a higher growth rate simply because you have capacity. This is what we projected for your age spread by 2050. That will probably be somewhat similar. What we may just have is a smaller number of people in each bar. But you're still going to be a family kind of community, but you will have a growing elderly or senior citizen population as every other city and place in this state is. Your demand projections will probably be similar to this. We used 26 data for this. RCO does a detailed diary survey every six years. And 2006 was the most accurate. But they have also done some 2017 projections, and we will probably update this a little bit if we can. It probably won't change the major findings, that fitness, playgrounds, walking, and observing wildlife are still going to be the major activities. And those are the activities that your parks should begin to focus on. This is the resident outreach survey. That's 625 completions. That's 625 households. So, if you were to multiply that roughly by three, you'd have some idea what the population number is that was recruited. These are the main characteristics. The major recruitment, 73% was by email, 25% by word of mouth, 22% by Facebook, 10% by website. Remember that because when I show you how school students are recruited, we're going to have entirely different sources. Residents, 19% said they don't live in the city. It's not unusual for people not necessarily to know whether they are city residents or not. But it's significant nonetheless that they identified and took the survey. Lived in the city, you can see 44% over 16 years. But there's a good spread amongst all the other year categories, including 13% that have lived here over less than two years. So, we have a good balance, at least, of how long they've been residents. By household size, 37% are two-person households. That reflects young people and older people, empty nesters. 91, 9% were just a one-person household. And so, that's a demographic to pay attention to. By age group, there was a good spread. 30% were in the 26 to 40, or the middle family ages, probably with kids. And so, we're going to reflect their interests. But 2% were from 19 to 25. So, we did pick up somewhat of a balance. 10% said they had a disability that affected their ability to access physically a park or program. And some of their accommodations is 43% would like hard-surface trails so they can maneuver on those. And 11% would like ADA playgrounds. Now, all of your playgrounds have ADA-qualified equipment. Probably, one of the trends or one of the newer innovations is what's called a universal playground. And that's where you can play on the equipment if you're in a wheelchair or if you're a physical disability. And that might be something for us to look at. By language, only 3% said they were Spanish speakers. But frankly, even though we had a Spanish version and recruited that way, what usually happens, there's somebody in the household that speaks English, and they're the ones that does the survey itself. It doesn't mean we shouldn't reach out in Spanish, but we don't find that they actually participate online in their native language. And last, for gender, 69% were female. Women are more diligent about filling out surveys. But wait till you see what the school student survey looks like. These are some of the major characteristics, or some of the... How often do you use the following parks? I'd have to read a little bit off of yours because my menu here sits right over top of that, unless you can... No. That's all right. I don't have my glasses on.
Little Mountain Baker View.
Yeah, the key parks they use is Little Mountain Baker View, Edgewater, Hillcrest, and Scagit. Those are your community and regional parks. That's not unusual that they would do that. But if you look down through there, there's a use of almost every one of your parks proportionate to what they are. If they're a neighborhood park, you're going to have less volume. But it does show that all your parks have some activity on them. When we asked for the trails, the trails were Little Mountain and Scagit River Walk. That's not unusual. Those are your premier trails, and those have the most environmental characteristics in which to observe. When we asked, what would you do, increase your use of parks? I highlighted again in the yellow areas, one of us better improvements. The route to the park, one of the questions is how do you get to the park and how you access it? And the next was a park or trail improvement on it. When we then asked, how important are the following features? There were trails and open spaces, walking paths, and picnic facilities. Now, in some respects, those are the classic either neighborhood park, what you can walk to, or your ability to get on a trail or something to take you somewhere else within the city.
Jennifer, I'm going to assume we'll have the slides put in the council drives so they can look at them. Great.
When we asked, how important are events? And this is interesting. Almost all of your events had significant importance to them. Walking and running, music concerts, festivals, and farmers' markets. And so, in some respects, the events are as much of an activity as the year-round programs some of the departments tends to host. Because these are not only for residents to be involved, but these are also reach outside the city and even bring in tourists. When we asked, what would we invest more money in? It was build more trails, build and add new parks, add a greater variety of parks, build, host more community events, take care of the forest, and increase routine maintenance. So, pretty much everything within that category they would invest in, which is significant. Now, when we look at school students, we had 743 completions. That's probably the highest student participation we've had in surveys. Probably the biggest, next biggest would be Vashon Island. But you have a much bigger population, and we focus primarily on middle and high school students. We don't survey elementary kids. That gets a little dicey with school districts, and parents get a little nervous. So, this is middle school age and up. So, by age, you can see 33% were in the 13 to 14, 26% in the 15 to 16, 25% in 11 to 12. And we've even had 2% under 10. By gender, male and female are balanced. See, we've got 50 bucks on the line, and so, everybody's into the action here. For school, you can see that's high school was a major recruitment source, but so were the middle schools in the proportionate size. How they get to school, 35% by bus, 33% family drive, 12% walk and 1% bike. Those percentages should be higher if we had connected routes across the city, and that would be one of the objectives in the plan. Years lived in Mount Vernon is really proportional to their age. But you can see that there are some that have lived here less than a year. So, there, we have newcomers as well as kids who've lived for quite a while. Now, best way to communicate? 63% text, 48% cellphone, 19% chat, 18% Instagram, 17% friend, only 14% email. So, if you want to talk to a kid, you don't use adult communication techniques. Some of the things we did ask is, what would you most like to do? And the numbers here relate to the number of kids said they would like to do these activities. And this would be activities with your city parks department. And I can't read the very top one there, can you?
Arts, paints, and ceramics.
Right, art, paint, and ceramics, which is interesting. That's art outreach. And I don't know how much art there is in your schools right now. But I was on the board of Mona, and we found that that is a major growth, a major outreach potential in all languages and all ethnic groups. Basketball, photography, self-defense, soccer, and volleyball. Now, you can also see, though, there are green bars and everything, and that's a challenge for the department. How can we maintain that many, a number of activities? And if so, or if we have to cut back, then which ones do we focus on where we have the most interest? We asked, what city, what parks do they use? And pretty much the same kind of community and regional parks by volume at least. But like the adults, they're in every single park within the city based on its size and its neighborhood proportion. We asked, which trails do you use? In this case, they use a little bit more. They use Hillcrest, Kiwanis, Colson, and Little Mountain. Because those are more accessible to them if they're in the neighborhood, or they're going to walk, or they're going to bike, or they're going to do these things on their own. So, one of the objectives, as you see, is to have an interconnected trail system throughout the city so they can go anywhere once they get on the trail network. What is your favorite park activity? It's hiking and walking and meeting friends. And we didn't put just hanging out. But when we asked the kids, hanging out is what they like to do. And then, of course, that's a very nebulous kind of description. But that's what kids do primarily. So, they go to the park to be there. And once they're there, they may engage in an activity, or they just may meet their friends. So, parks are important gathering places as well as organized activity. What facilities would they add? They would add more trails again. They would add sports courts. And we'll explain sports courts later, but that's to be multi-use courts that do more than just, say, basketball or tennis or whatever. Athletic fields, and then, dog parks. And this was interesting, that the kids had a much more focus on dog parks than, say, the adults did. What limits your involvement? One of the key issues is unaware of events. And that seems to be true in every city, that people aren't connected at least, or they're not aware that they can be connected to find out what is available and what they want to do. The next would be they're not interested in it, of course. And then, the other key issue is schedule conflicts. One of the major approaches being debated by recreation departments is, do we do a catalog and put out and say, these are the times that the activity's going to be available? Or do we put out and say, what do you want to do? What times work for you? We'll schedule around when you're available to do that. Now, sometimes, schedule conflicts are kind of a misnomer to say, I just can't get there. I'm not really all that interested in making the effort. So, you don't want to read too much into that. The last thing we asked them, we've been asking more and more when we talk to youth. And that's was, what would you most, what do you currently do? What would you most like to do if you had the opportunity? So, you can see the... So you can see the green bars, what they do now, and they have social connections, and they network, and they participate. But the blue bar says they would like to do a lot more of that. But the other two bars are public service and jobs. And you can see how big those blue bars are, that they would like to be involved in, in public volunteer activities. That works right into the parks department. And they would also like a job, even more so. So I think that the, the idea that our youth are uninterested is not really true, as you can see from the survey. The question is making opportunities available for them. Now, I'm gonna take you through a real quick inventory of what we did. These are your twenty-seven parks. The numbers correspond to where the green issues are on the map. You can see the biggest parks there, of course, are Little Mountain, Baker View, Hillcrest, and Edgewater. But you also wanna look, take a look at the fact that most of them are in this cluster, and there are areas in here where there aren't parks. And that's gonna show up, the significance will show up a little later. These are the county and state. The primary ones are the playfields around the college. And of course, Fish and Wildlife has the Spud House access at the far reaches of the river. And there's Big Rock, although Big Rock is technically closed. It's a conservancy, doesn't have developed facilities. But it is used for trails, and it is, is quote, open, even if it's, does has, even if it's not officially designated as being open. These are the Mount Vernon School District properties. We've also included on here ICRS and Mount Vernon Christian. You can see their distribution is a little bit better, but of course, in there, we have the same kind of blank area in between. These are your HOAs. There's a cluster in this area, and there's a few in here, and there's even one down in this area. HOAs are a little bit difficult. They do reduce your development costs and maintenance costs, but they, there's, they're only accessible to the people that are part of the HOA. And one of the problems is that the people who remain outside the HOAs, usually there's not enough of a volume of them to justify adding another city park. So they're kind of in a no-man's land, and figuring out how best to serve them is, is an open question. And these are the nonprofit facilities, the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Club. And probably the unknown question is what happens to Eaglemont Golf Course, since it's been closed and purchased by a religious organization, but it has significant amounts of open space over golf course, whichever you want to choose from. These are how the are arranged within the downtown area. And you can see you have a lot of significant park and facilities within this zone. As significant as it should be, as this downtown area. And the question is how to get access to these facilities from the rest of the city and, and between them when you're within that area. Now, we're gonna show, oh, these are your existing on- and off-road trails. And you can see you have Colson, you have Trumpeter, but we don't have a network of trails, and that's the objective. This is your five- and ten-minute walk. The dark gold color is five minutes, the yellow color is yellow. This is only parks, and this is only to the entrance of a park. Sometimes you have major properties like Baker's View, and you, and you, if you're on the north side of it, you can't enter the park. So we measure the time distance from wherever the routes and the sidewalks and roads take you. And you can see there are blank areas in here, as we've talked about, where there aren't facilities. This is the same thing if we add the schools, and we assume that the schools are also accessible. Now, the pattern is a little bit better. And then the question is how best to make use of what the school facilities are in your facilities so that we're not duplicating and we're specializing. This is what's called social equity mapping. This is single-parent households. The dark color is over thirty percent of the households in that area are by one adult, male or female, but predominantly female. You can see where they're clustered, older sections of town. This is housing expense. The darkest color, they're paying over forty percent of their income for housing. HUD says you shouldn't be paying more than thirty percent. There's some of the same areas as we just looked at, single parenting. This is poverty. The darkest color is over twelve percent are in poverty status. You can see this is somewhat similar to single parent, and it's a correlation, correlation. This is non-English speakers. The darker color is over three to seven percent. And you can see the older areas, older neighborhoods is where migration typically enters the city. And this is the composite. And you can see all those, most of those characteristics are correlated together within that zone. The question for parks development and for recreation programs is to make sure there's equity that these people can participate the same as those that can afford it or that have better access. Sometime that's a question of fees, sometimes scholarships, and sometimes it's simply outreach. If they can then get to the parks and the facilities, you want them to be able to access like anybody else in the city. Now, I'm gonna show you very quickly some of our citywide kind of inventory and assessments. This is waterfront access, and on the very bottom is kind of the code. So we looked at where the boat ramps, the hand-carry launches, and the waiting and fishing areas are, and what we're proposing to consider, something up here off of Hoag Road to provide another access to the river where you could launch a canoe or you could fish, so that we have a, take as much advantage of your riverfront as we can. These are the picnic facilities. You can see the distribution is pretty good, but there are orange, we plotted, as you can see, tables and shelters. But you can see that we have some orange here, the orange is what we're proposing. And that's to fill in those gaps where there isn't anything, as we've, we saw from the inventory from before. Now, a lot of those are to be determined, meaning we have no idea what the site would be or, or any particular property. And the issue is simply, we know we need something within that general area. These are the sports courts. And what we're looking at is basketball, pickleball, tennis, volleyball, disc golf, and skate park. In years past, we used to develop dedicated courts, so it'd be a basketball court only, or it'd be a tennis court only. And what we're doing now is saying those courts should be multipurpose, so if you go there, you can play whatever you or someone else is interested in doing it. It's not that expensive. They have a basketball standard on the same tennis court that you're playing on, or a pickleball court. Not all of them have to be full-size. We find that we can do pickleball and even a half-court basketball in about the same overall dimensions for just, for the same cost that you would build for just one of those by themselves. These are the athletic fields. Now, the distribution reflects schools and where your larger parks are. They do not have to be distributed like we would be looking for playgrounds and picnic facilities. What we'd be looking for is capacity, safety, and security. And so we've looked at baseball and softball, soccer, football, and track. In the old days, as I said, we would build dedicated facilities. What we're looking at now is what's called rectangular fields, so you can combine soccer and baseball, the baseball skinned areas outside the soccer boundaries. And we're looking at synthetic turf and lights where that's feasible within the neighborhoods. What you don't wanna be is in the real estate business, you wanna be in the use business. So the multi-use fields are more practical. You can be used all year round, and actually, over the long term, they're, they're more cost-effective than trying to do dedicated, single grass fields scattered throughout the city. The only areas that we had looked at, we did look at Mount Baker Middle School, and we're also looking at Hillcrest, and Hillcrest may be overlaying some of the fields. And in some cases, as in Edgewater, upgrade the existing standard. Now, a lot of cities, we've, the cities and the school districts have coordinated and worked together. Primarily, the question is, what are the safety and security issues on the elementary fields? Because they're the practice fields. And what you wanna do is get the kids on the practice fields, reserve the competition fields for as much of the playtime as you can. And oftentimes, those, those fields are large enough in overall area, but they're not particularly in good, safe, playable condition. So sometimes there are joint ventures, opportunities for that. These are your indoor facilities. You have a plethora of them, so it's not like you need to have new places in which to meet. And the only question is, particularly like in the school districts, and in, even in some of the HOAs, are they available to the public, and are they reasonable? But you have plenty of capacity. These are the special facilities, the community gardens, the dog parks, the pump tracks, the splash parks, and the disc golf. And actually, these are some of the fastest-growing activities in the inventory. So one of the questions, are they available? Are they, are they appropriate sites in which to put them on? And one of the areas, proposed areas would be in Bonnie Ray Park. And the issue there would be, can we provide some kind of improvement that fits the natural areas of the park and the natural areas of activities? Now, these are the on- and off-road trails. And I say on and off because in some cases, like Colson and Trumpeter, they are off-road, and that's preferable if you can do that. But we do need to connect those links. We, you need a east-west grid, and you need a north-south grid that connects as many schools and as many parks as you can. So we will have to take advantage, in some cases, of sidewalks and road shoulders in which to do that. This element, we usually see incorporated into your comprehensive plan because that gives you standing. So if a development comes in within an area that you've already designated, you have an objective of having it a trail corridor, then you have the ability to talk to the developer or the landowner about when and where that would be. And we do preface that this is a concept, and it's, it depends on further consultations with the property owners and the, and the people that are gonna use it, so they're not to be read as as-built plans. This is what it looks like in the downtown. What we're trying to do is go from Lyons Park all the way through the Riverwalk, and then make use of the dikes on top, and then also on the inside dikes that would take you through Edgewater and on out to the Spud House. Now, those docks, those docks, those levees are outside city limits. And actually, they're used now, even though they're not designated. And one of the issues with the dike districts is, are they formerly designated or not? Most dike districts are really leery of the liability, that somebody would be her on their dike. And the only way that you can have them publicly designated, signage and on maps and so on, is if somehow there's some arrangement about sharing that liability. Some of the dike districts have been more open to that than others, but it's an increasing trend that they're gradually becoming more aware that there are benefits for them doing that. Either way, they're currently used in an undesignated capacity. Now, the other issue is how do we link Edgewater to Riverwalk? And I know at some, one time, there's talk about trying to put a pedestrian bridge across here, and we did take a look at that. One of the issues would be the bottom of the bridge would have to be above the highest high-water mark on the river and not be an obstacle. That would put the bulk or the bottom of that bridge in eyesight. You'd be standing on Riverwalk looking at the bottom of the pedestrian bridge. It would also have to be ADA, so you would have ramps on both sides of the river in which to do that, and that'd be another visual impediment. And on Edgewater, you'd probably be standing there all alone once the floodwaters come through the rest of the park. Lastly, it would be on the city's dime. That would not be eligible for federal or state funding, 'cause it's not combined with another transportation corridor. So our, our solution is to stick with the existing bridge, and we think that bridge is probably gonna be redeveloped sooner than what we've anticipated before with the Infrastructure Act. And if it's done, then the state and federal standards require expanded pedestrian access and a bike lane. So the only question is how long that will take. It took a while. What we have left is we will be back in a couple of months with how these things relate to each park. We were looking at financing issues. We'll be having some open houses. And then lastly, we will have a survey of your voter households to see what their priorities are, not only for improvements, but for financing options.
So we weren't looking for any action this evening, just to share the information. I will get that uploaded. I had one uploaded in there, but it didn't show some of the markings that we had, and I forgot to go back in when we got the new one and put it in there. So I apologize for that, but I will get it in there first thing in the morning.
And I assume, Finney, council members have any questions or want different types of input, just reach out to Jennifer?
Absolutely.
That's in the docks, or are in the parks section, where you're gonna put it into our packet?
I can put it into, which, what would you prefer?
I might just put in both, that way they can look at their packet for today.
I can do that.
But then in the, in the parks folder, I'm sure there's something there we can put in.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for including the children.
Yes, absolutely.
Their voice matters, and I think it's great that we had such a great turnout with that.
I, I have to applaud the school district. They were very open to, I talked with Dr. Pavanko, and he opened those doors for us to be able to get it to the junior high and the high schools. So, yeah, it was great. It's great to see their responses and how it's different, right? And how we need to reach our populations differently. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Item D is a public hearing for street vacations. Wait, do I have that right? Yeah, I do, sorry. And Alan Danforth from Development Services here for this. Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Council, how you doing? So, back in January, I'd come in to set up a public hearing date for this, and we had briefly discussed the vacation of a narrow strip of alleyway just to the east of Second and Gate Street on the south side of Gate Street. Ordinance, I believe it's thirty-eight sixty-seven tonight, would approve that if, if Council so desires after the public hearing. Just, just to do a little revisit of, of the area that we're talking about is, we have a alleyway that goes north-south, and halfway up the alleyway, there is a four-foot jog. I've looked at this with Public Works and Planning, and we have no short-term or long-term plans for the right-of-way. And we do have potential long-term plans for the remainder of the alley that will stay in place, and that, that depends on some studies that Public Works is doing right now on how to separate the storm and sewer system in the area. So, to reiterate, I guess, is that in, in general, it's going to be this little four-foot strip of, of land that we would vacate back to the property owner. And again, this is just a little aerial view of that, of that strip. Right now, the alleyway is not actually used as access in any way, shape, or form. There is some parking that goes along in there, and there are two utilities that are located within the four-foot strip that will be vacated, so they'll, we will retain an easement for those two, which is, I think it's Puget Sound Energy and Cascade Natural Gas. Outside of that, that's about all I've got for you. So, any questions about that?
Any questions for Alan on this particular council action? All right. So then, we are required to open a public hearing if there's any comments on that. So I'd open a public hearing if there's anyone would like to speak to the street vacation as presented. Brian wants to, since he's here.
I really wasn't planning on this one, but if I understood right, you're gonna give that stretch of alleyway back to the property owners. There are people who park on that stretch of alleyway. That is less parking this city is going to have. And parking in this city and places is a nightmare to begin with. You have empty buildings, the old Y Building, the, a building on the southeast, southwest corner of La Venture and College Way, some buildings downtown. I think the city council's agenda, sites, whatever you wanna call it, is a bit askew. This should be really low on the totem pole when there is a whole lot of other problems. Number one, parking. The owners of the property can charge for parking now. More money for them, less parking for the city. That's something to think about.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on the hearing? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing regarding the street vacation. This would be ordinance thirty-eight sixty-seven if Council chooses to take action, or if there's any questions for Alan.
No, I'd just like to say, Alan, thanks for bringing this to us. I know I talked to Director Phillips about this when he was in the other department. And, and, you know, this property's been encumbered for the property owner. They haven't been able to do a lot of the things that are required of them to do because of the, the alleyway being in the way. So this is just kind of the, really, it's a housecleaning issue.
Absolutely.
Get the property owner to be able to conform with, with design standards, really. So if there's no other questions, I'd move the adoption of ordinance thirty-eight seven, sixty-seven.
All right, motion by Mark in a second, but Gary, any other questions? All right? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Item C is the public defense contract renewal with Mountain Law, and that's Peter Donovan, our special projects manager, is here for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello again, Council. Since 2014, Mountain Law has provided public defense services for the city of Mount Vernon. Since 2014, Mountain Law has provided public defense services for the city of Mount Vernon that exceed the standards adopted by city ordinance. Recently, the city extended an agreement with Mountain Law for an additional three months so that staff could review performance and negotiate terms. The city consulted outside council during that time, and although it was outside council's general feeling that the city of Mount Vernon is likely a leader in, in public defense services, it was recommended that staff use state Supreme Court-established standards to review Mountain Law's performance and adherence to things like prescribed caseloads, as well as a review of compensation for public offenders within jurisdictions of similar size. So following an extensive look into Mountain Law's practices using those guidelines, staff has determined that Mountain Law continues to provide outstanding indigent defense services despite facing many of the, the common workplace challenges that many businesses face today, to include attorney recruitment and retention. The agreement before council tonight seeks to address those challenges by bringing Mountain Law's compensation packages more in line with other firms and jurisdictions with whom they compete for a limited pool of qualified and skilled applicants. Specifically, this is a three-year agreement. Year one includes a 10% adjustment to compensation and a one-year continuation of the council-approved funding to address the remaining backlog of cases caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and shutdown there. In year two, the total contract amount excludes that backlog bonus, if you will, so the total amount in year two is a little bit less than year one, and then in year three, a modest 2.5% adjustment to that lowered year-two amount has been, has been added. So, the contract has been reviewed and approved by outside council. It's been approved by Mountain Law. City of Burlington staff, and City of Burlington, as you recall, shares the public defense program costs with the City of Mount Vernon at a 60-40. They are, staff approves of the terms and will take this agreement to Burlington City Council tomorrow evening. And with that, staff is recommending council authorize the mayor to enter into this renewed agreement with Mountain Law for continued indigent defense services.
Great. Questions for Peter on this item?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion that council authorize the mayor to enter into a renewed agreement with Mountain Law for indigent defense services.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Melissa and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right. Item F tonight is House Bill 1590 funding agreement with Skagit County, and Peter's here for this as well. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you were recently briefed that Skagit County Public Health funds a number of human services using a revenue stream that's funded by local document recording fees. That funding stream is tied, of course, to the cooling housing market, and as a result, funding for many of the human services in our area are down by as much as 50% in some cases. At the same time, the demand for funding for human services is increasing. Skagit First Steps Shelter, Martha's Place, permanent supportive housing are two examples of year-round needs that, that are being added in recent years. The city of Mount Vernon is participating, along with other Skagit cities and the North Star Project, and a coordination of, which is a coordination of government jurisdictions seeking to establish efficiencies in our county-wide approach to human services. Other cities in the North Star Project are identifying their respective 1590, or that's, that's housing sales tax revenue returned as a way to collectively address this shortfall in funding. For instance, the city of Burlington is considering an agreement to commit $300,000 per year for the next five years, while Cedric Woolley has approved a $100,000 per year for three-year agreement. The one-year agreement before council tonight would direct $500,000 of the city of Mount Vernon's 1590 funding to assist Skagit County Public Health's efforts to fund the operations of Martha's Place, the 70-unit permanent supportive housing development that's set to open this spring. Bridging this funding gap is, is an urgent need for addressing some of the more complex challenges in, in the community, and with some thorough and comprehensive solutions. And because of that, staff's recommending that council would authorize the mayor to enter into this one-year inter-local agreement with Skagit County for the purpose of allocating $500,000 in city House Bill 1590 funds toward the operation of Martha's Place Permanent Supportive Housing Development.
Great. Questions for Peter on this particular item? We've discussed it in committee, but the public may have not seen those discussions.
I think it's important for the public to, to know that these $1590 that have been collected are a sales tax that was really put on by the legislature, and it's designed to, to support low-income housing and the most vulnerable in our community. So these dollars have been collected. We haven't yet had any need to, or any projects to spend those on, so this is just kind of some money that's sitting there. There's a need right now to fill a void for basically a one-year period. So by committing these dollars, we're actually gonna put 70 residents into, into a permanent supportive housing. Without these dollars, that, that housing couldn't open up, and those folks wouldn't be housed.
Any other questions for Peter on this?
If I hear no questions or comments, I'll motion for the approval for the city to partner with Skagit County for $500,000 from 1590 funds for the operations of Martha's Place.
Second.
All right. Motion by Juan and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Peter. That completes our scheduled agenda items this evening. I'll ask our city attorney if there's a need for an executive session.
No.
All right. That then will be adjourned at 8:16.